Okay, what I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. I think it's about, what, 6:35 on June 1st. You all have the posted agenda. I believe that it stands as, as posted.
Michael?
You have, yes?
I'm sorry, I'm not in the meeting. Whatever you did took me out, Jim. It says the meeting post will let you in soon.
I can see and hear you.
Can you see and hear us or no?
I can hear you, I cannot see you.
Let's see if I can.
And it says that you'll let me in soon.
I'll let you in on the other.
There you go. Okay, that's it.
All right.
I might even be in twice.
Yeah, thank you.
We did from a previous life, we have the minutes from February 25th and March 2nd. Did you all have an opportunity to read them?
Yes.
Yes.
Could I hear a motion to approve, yes, to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second? Very good. I'm just going to do by voice, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any again say nay. Okay, the next thing we wanted to do is we're going to set up a couple of extra meetings, which I think will become, we get into rationale for this later. The first that we wish to set up in addition is for the 6th of July. And the second we wish to set up on a Tuesday would be the 8th of September. This will enable us to try and catch up with some of the larger projects we have and maybe get some of them off our plate. So what I'd like to do is hear a motion to accept setting up those two additional virtual meetings. We're assuming there's still going to be virtual meetings.
Second.
Okay, once again by voice, all in favor please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We don't have a schedule of time here because these are not public hearings. What we need to do, and we're doing tonight for the first three items, is we have to reschedule all the public hearings, which mean they also have to be re-noticed. So what we're going to do is we've asked the people, each of the people to come in. If they have a 10 or 15 minute presentation they'd like to make to us, that's okay. They have to understand it's not the public hearing, therefore they're not going to, the public is not going to be here to listen. It's probably in their best interest and certainly in ours if they would hold off on a detailed presentation of their, of their application until we actually have the public hearing. But anyway, the other thing is that we can get to later, or we may wish to put this off, is we all received from the town board the referral of the rezoning of the Office Research Park to allow a car dealership, car maintenance, basically opportunity for rugies to move all their servicing and car prep through the Office Research Park area. We have 60 days to make a recommendation to them and obviously we don't have to do it tonight. The other things that have been dumped on you, the grassmere, for example, it's quite understandable, everyone hasn't maybe had a chance to read over what this zoning amendment is. I'm certainly happy to put off making a recommendation till the 15th unless you've all seen it and if you're all comfortable with it, we could certainly do it tonight, get the conclusion of, of tonight's, the four things we have on the agenda tonight. So, you know, think about how you feel about that, how comfortable you are when you prefer to do it, you know, if you'd like to have more time to consider it. So I think the first thing is Roger Smith Tannery Place, site plan special use permit, construction of addition to existing residents and convert bond to a second detached accessory dwelling. I guess, Jim, we could probably get to that.
Yeah, so if everyone can just bear with me, I will unmute our applicants as we go through the agenda.
I am muted. Mark Kaminsky.
Hi, Mark, and you had told me that two others would be on the call. I don't see them here right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether I, they may have the wrong meeting ID info and password. It was Mike Walsh from Mall Cop Builders, he's the GC on the project. And also, Michael Byrd, he's the project architect.
Don't see either of them on the call at the moment.
Okay.
Do you want to just move?
I will, I'll just, there's been, just, I'll say a minor change to the project. The, is the board remember the extent of the project? Do I need to go through that again?
At this point, what we're sort of hoping to do is to reschedule the public hearing for the project, at which time then we would hope for, you know, a full presentation on the project, you know, with the public also able to participate.
Yeah, and so the only change has been a reduction in accessory structure number two, which is the, which is the attached garage. And so it's been reduced in size from, from 1,100 and, 1,100 and 16 square feet of floor area to 933 square feet. The applicant, along with the contractor, has, they've gone through and they've reduced the scope of the project. And so, right now, that's, that's, that's the only change. The accessory structure became a bit smaller. And then one other minor change is just a slight realignment to the, to the driveway that's going to enter the garage. If you look to the, to the east, almost east of where that new driveway enters into the garage, there's, there's a parking, like a hammerhead parking area there. It's just going to transition from that hammerhead parking area into the driveway, just make a wider turn through there. And then a little bit of, also on the east side of the driveway, almost opposite the existing residence, they're just going to widen that out for some parking there. That's it. That's the, that's the only change to the project.
Okay.
Mark, I have a, I have a question for Mark. Have you read the copy of the report that was done by the Historic Preservation Committee?
I have not.
Okay.
Okay, we'll make sure that you receive that.
Okay.
Other, other questions or comments from other planning board members at this point?
Can I ask the scope of the report or are there any?
My recollection. I don't think there were any major issues. I think they, the person who wrote the report is the archaeologist on the committee and she just think there were more open-ended questions than they were substantive comments. So I know Jim's copy of it, I don't think it's anything to be terribly concerned about, but something you'd want to be prepared to answer at the public hearing.
Okay, great. And if, yeah, if I could get a copy of that, that'd be great.
Am I correct, Jim, that you have that?
I'll send it. I have it.
Okay.
I'll send it.
Yeah, that was the letter that had two, I think there were two.
Actually, the two are both involve Mark because the second, the underground utilities.
That's that committee chair, Mark, I'll send it.
Okay, yeah, I did see the one for, for the second project, for KPH2 and the other, and the other sites. And I have, I did actually have the project archaeologist out to that property, but I'll wait till we get to, I'll wait till we get to that agenda item.
Okay.
Any other questions from members of the planning board? Do we have a representative of the CAB here? Hearing none, I'm assuming not.
I thought I saw Mark Dixon on the call.
Oh.
Yes, Mark is there.
Mark here?
I should unmute Mark. I'm here. Yep, I'm here.
So, Mark, what we're doing tonight primarily is rescheduling the public hearing since everything kind of fell apart a couple of months ago. And then asking Mark and people he's working with on this project to then at the public hearing give a, you know, more detailed, complete presentation on the project, both for our, our benefit as well as for any members of the public who are there. But if you have any questions now, the CAB has any questions now you'd like to ask Mark, you should feel free.
Yeah, I just, we, I reached out to Mark, we still needed to schedule a site visit and he hadn't gotten back. I know the whole pandemic thing hit, so we never got an opportunity to get out there.
So, Mark, we can schedule that. I'd like to, and actually if any other planning board members would like to go, I'd also, I, I have reached out to the ZBA to see if they would like to do a site visit prior to their meeting on the 17th. So I'd like to try to coordinate that with, with anybody else who wants to attend and just try to keep it to a one-site visit. So I'll, Mark, I'll stay in touch with you and try to coordinate that. And if, I'll ask Gretchen to, if any other planning board members want to visit the site, just please reach out to me.
Okay, great. And then I'd probably have most of my questions then.
Do you have, if you have them in written form, you could send them, send them to me so I could be prepared when we be.
Okay, well, until I see the site, yeah, I probably won't really have a lot of questions.
Okay.
Is there anything else anyone would like to ask or bring up right now? I have a resolution, basically a procedural resolution to reschedule the public hearing, which I will read if we're ready to move to that step. I guess we are, okay. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the application. Roger Smith Tannery Place for site plan review and special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 at 437 Route 308 within the RC5 Rural Countryside Zoning District. We reschedule the public hearing on the application for, what dates did we have for this, Jim? Was it the July 6th?
I believe so. We should, Gretchen though, she is the keeper of the calendar.
Gretchen? June 15th at 6:35.
Okay. 15th at 6:35. And directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof. Unfortunately, we have to re-notice all of these since we weren't able to reschedule them before we went dark, as it were. We reconfirm the planning board members. Melody and Sharon, I believe, have already done their site visit. But anyone else who wishes to come and visit the site, you know, do get in touch with Mark and he would be more than happy to allow you to get, get going with that. If not previously completed, in accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, we're referring it to the Conservation Advisory Board and for their review or comment concerning environmental factors, referring it to the town historian again for review and comment concerning historical aspects of the property and our location within adjacent to a national historic district or individually listed historic property. We're referring it to the application, which I think we've already done, to the Town Historic and Archaeological Preservation Advisory Committee for comment and review concerning historical, archaeological, architectural and cultural resources. We're referring it to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development in accordance with 239 Planning-Zoning Referral Procedure. And we're referring the application again to Duchess County Department of Health regarding individual water supply and wastewater disposal permits and approvals. We authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit or in referral, preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on June 15th or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm going to poll the board. If I leave anybody out, please don't take it personally. Melody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Without a yes, I take it.
It is.
Very good. Edna?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we'll be hearing for you again on the 15th of June.
Great. Just one thing, Michael, and it covers both advertising for this project and the next one that we're going to discuss. You know, the last time I advertised for this, almost all my notifications, a majority of them were sent back. And so, and so I, and just trying to limit, you know, interaction with the post office, I, I found a service where I can, it's, and I went through the code and I also talked to Gretchen about this, where it's, you know, I send it certified mail and it's, it's actually noted as being delivered.
Okay.
And whether or not that's satisfactory to do this, I found a way to do this whole thing online. But what it doesn't, what doesn't occur, I mean, there's notification it was, that it was delivered. What doesn't occur is the green cards coming back. And that was, that was a bigger issue I had, I mean, because I had advertised for this and also, I believe also for the ZBA too, for this project. And I can't, I got the majority of all my mailings back. And I was, so I'm wondering whether that's satisfactory to the board for me to use a service that it is certified and it's, and it's verified that it's delivered.
I think from our zoning law, it just says that the things go out certified mail, but I don't recall if it references returning the green cards, that it has to be mailed certified, but I don't recall a requirement that the green cards be returned. And we do that obviously for confirmation, but if there's another means of confirmation that's more reliable. Jim, what do you think? Jim?
Somebody always muted. I did, I did talk to Gretchen about this a little bit and I thinking was that as long as it's certified, that it, delivery was attempted, I think that meets the, the letter of the law and does what we need. We can always guarantee everyone is going to accept these if they're out of town or mails forwarded or whatever it might be. That was kind of my, my thinking on that, as long as we have a certification that it was attempted to be delivered. I don't know that, I don't think the code requires a guarantee that it was opened or read or that kind of thing.
I don't.
No, I have the portion of the code if you want me to read it quickly so everybody understands. It says shall be sent and confirmed by the applicant using certified mail, registered mail, delivery confirmation, signature confirmation or cer, or certificate of mailing and shall be certified to the planning board that compliance has timely occurred.
That's, to me. Thank you. Yeah, Mark, give it a shot.
I will. Thank you.
Now, don't go away.
I'm not.
Our next is KPH2 Management LLC, T Court LLC, Brindle Valley LLC, Ferencus Nursing Home CO, Inc., at various addresses for underground utilities at, there at those properties.
Right, so that's just the, the project that, that includes. And I, I think it's been maybe last week or the week before, I, I've updated those drawings since the last planning board meeting to include some other items along with the underground utilities. The original application also included the service drive. There's a total of nine drawings to the plan set. And there's been no, no changes to the underground utilities or the service drive. What has been added is I added some detail. There's detail relative to the powerhouse for the utilities going to the powerhouse. Just some, some changes, some just, just details, drainage details to the, around the powerhouse. And then the final item that I added and included as part of this is, you know, I've discussed with the board before the, the water, stormwater, wastewater and stormwater situation at, at, at the main residence on KPH2. And I have come up with a, with a solution for that. And those, it's, you know, essentially a repair of the septic system. And that's now shown on, on one of, one of the company sheets also. But the, you know, the, the majority, those are just a few minor changes to the plans. And I think I sent those in a couple of weeks ago.
Any questions for Mark? Any questions from the CAB?
I think we, I think we still need to schedule a site visit with Mark.
Yeah, maybe we could do that at the same day, Mark.
That would be fine, yes.
Yeah, get both of them. Once again, any other planning board members that want to attend is fine. And also for Kathy, that, on that, I did mention it earlier with the archaeology. I did, I did see that archaeology comment for this project. I did have the original archaeologist on the, on the, on site is Jay Cohen. And I had Jay out there last week to finalize, you know, items on KPH2 and also of the other properties. So our, our hope is to have that, have any archaeological concerns addressed for the meeting on the 15th.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Will planning board members be getting copies of these historical committee letters?
Yes. Yes, you will.
Edna, we've only, pardon the echo, we've only had one meeting and it was well before the pandemic, so we're still developing protocol.
Thanks.
But those letters will be entered into the record for each application and therefore, yes, planning board members will, will have, have them, sent to them as well. Any other questions before I read another resolution? Alrighty, here we go. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the application by KPH2 Management, T Court LLC, Brindle Valley LLC, Ferencus Nursing Home, for site plan review, special permit and wetland permit under Town Code Chapter 125, 120, at the various places within the HB20 Historic Preservation Zoning District. We reschedule the public hearing on the application for, Gretchen?
Gretchen, you're muted.
Sorry. June 15th at 6:40.
Okay, at 6:40. We reconf, and we reconfirm, board members said, oh, Woody and I were going out there. Didn't, didn't make it yet, Mark.
Didn't happen yet.
I'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
And someone else will have, anyone else who would like to come really should come with me as well to go out there and we'll, we'll set this up with, with Mark. All right, if not previously completed, we are referring it to the Conservation Advisory Board for comment and review on environmental issues. We're also referring it to our waterfront consistency committee to comment for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. We are referring it to the town historian for comment and review and to the historic, Town Historic and Archaeological Preservation Advisory Committee for comment and review. Realizing a number of the things have already happened, we just want to make sure that we've covered everything. We weren't entirely sure what had happened during the Dark Ages. We're referring it to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development in accordance with 239 zoning and planning referral procedure and referring it to the Duchess County Department of Health regarding individual water supply and wastewater disposal permits and approvals. Authorizing without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral, preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on June 15th or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I will poll the board. Edna?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, very good.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch, Mark.
Okay, Gretchen, can you, just to confirm, can you just, we'll confirm those mailings tomorrow? Is that possible?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm in two to five.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, our next, next agenda item is Henry Stout, 139 Montgomery Street, site plan, single-family development home on town and village property.
Give me one second, I will unmute Henry. All right. I don't think Henry's here anymore. He was, I believe he was. Well, I guess we will move forward. Michael, I don't, Henry was on the call, I believe, but I don't see him here anymore. So I guess maybe we'll just move forward with the rescheduling and.
We could. Do we want to reschedule in his absence and just let him know? Or should we hold off until we can have him present?
He's not here anymore.
Maybe he got a better offer.
We could, we could reschedule him without him being present and if he asks for a continuation beyond that.
Very good.
Why don't we do that?
Okay. Well, having read everything I read before and with Henry Stout, we would schedule this for June 15th at?
6:45.
45?
6:45.
And we will authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral, preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for planning board's consideration on June 15th or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second. I will poll the board. Kathy?
If you say me.
Yep.
Yes.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Okay, we're on to grassmere.
Yeah, we'll unmute people for this one. Give me a second, I will unmute everyone I need to. Oh, you guys are already on, okay. Okay. I think we have everybody online.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, all right.
John and Kimberly here?
Yes, John Montane.
Yep, I'm here.
And what about, and I think Adrian is the last one from our.
I'm here as well.
Oh, great, okay. Feels like a miracle when this works.
Don't, don't say that yet.
Knock on wood.
Anyone else, Jim?
I think that's everyone. I think we have representatives from the village to be unmuted as well in the village of Rhinebeck.
Yes.
It's Paul Quach.
Brent Uniker, trustee.
And Kim just logged on, so I will get her online as well, but I think we can move forward.
Are we set?
I think so.
Okay. For the members of the planning board, for Jonathan and his team and all and for the guests from the village, the trustees, this morning, Jim, John Lyons, Kimberly, Rager Kowski, Melody and I had a meeting together to go over how we felt was the best way to address the seeker situation. And basically, there's more information that we require to put us in a position to make a seeker determination of significance. The possibility would be possibly a supplemental environmental impact statement if there were certain issues that we identified under the, what's under the new proposal that we would feel would be. under the what's under the new proposal that we would feel would want that to happen. We're not proposing to go back and cover old ground for, let's say, the phase one portions of the project, things of that sort. We're not proposing to do an NOI, anything like that. What we are going to do, and we have tasked ourselves with making a very specific definitive list of the additional information we need to make what we believe we need to make a determination of significance for the overall project. Now, it's not going to be phased now, it'll be all, you know, done at once. And therefore, we need to approve the whole thing at once. We are giving ourselves a week or two to try and pull this all together to make sure that we get everything we need to get. So we don't have to go back and do this again. And as soon as possible, get that list to Jonathan and his team so they can provide that information. I'm sure somewhere it exists, or you're putting it together now or something of that sort. We would like to schedule on June, on Jan, oof, January, on July sixth, a meeting to go down over these different issues to discuss everything, to see if we have everything we need so that the planning board will be in a position to make a determination of significance, to see if any further seeker review is required, to what extent it's required, to ensure that we have all the information that we have. And we think at that point, once we get that satisfied settled, I think then we're really going to be in a good position to proceed with the overall review of this project. As I know you guys know who have proposed it, there's a tremendous amount of information here to go over. There are a couple of things that were identified that weren't apparently in what we were given. You may well have it, but we weren't given it. For example, the information on the sewage disposal project portion of the thing was not in the information we were given. The appendix A, in terms of the water agreement with the village, showing all the different village improvements, because part of seeker, of course, is the impact of a project on neighboring areas, things of that sort. And that obviously is important. There are a couple of other things like that they were just missing, possibly. They just didn't get it in the packet, whatever, I don't know. But obviously, we need that information. But that's pretty much what we have decided to try and proceed on seeker with. I know that John and George have had a number of conversations today. And George, maybe there's something you'd like to add in here, I don't know. And John or Kimberly may also be able to more clear more clearly describe the path that we came up with this morning that we felt was the most effective, and we hope the most efficient way to move this thing along. So at this point, if John or Kimberly are there, would like to add something further or clarify what I just said, that would be great.
Michael, this is Ken. That also, I think that's exactly what we had talked about. I think John is muted.
Yeah, I am sorry.
I don't have anything to add. I think that's exactly what we have discussed.
Yeah, I don't know, Michael, I was just a minute or too late. But I don't know if you explain to the planning board members about supplemental environmental impact statement about that being, you know, whether that is something that's going to be required is the is the question that'll be in front of the board as they review the materials here. Supplemental environmental impact statements are not unusual following generic environmental impact statements. Because very often times, they are more sites, the subsequent material that comes in is more site specific than the information that's in front of the lead agency for at the generic environmental impact stage. So the task of the board will be to take a look at the changes that have been proposed to the project since it was last in front of the board. Take understand those changes, and then you'll have to make a judgment as a board in your capacity as the lead agency about whether you think any of the changes that are being presented are not covered under the generic environmental impact statement and may it may present an adverse, a significant adverse environmental impact. And so you'll essentially be making, you know, determination of significance with regard to the current iteration of the project as to the extent that it presents some information or has elements that are different than those which were reviewed as part of the generic environmental impact statement. And we'll have the finding statement from that generic environmental impact statement to look back on and to be able to use as a baseline for the determination that you'll be making going forward. I think, you know, that's sort of a thumbnail sketch. If you if you decide that the changes do not present the possibility of significant adverse environmental impacts, then you'll have the option of being able to issue a negative declaration as your determination of significance on the revised version of the plan, which would conclude your seeker review. You'd have to, if you make that negative declaration, set forth the reasons in support of that. You can also, if you do think that there will be significant adverse environmental impacts on new or changed parts of the plan, then you'll have the opportunity to issue a positive declaration, which would require then the supplemental environmental impact statement, which would study the issues that you've identified. I want to be clear that a supplemental environmental impact statement does not mean that you're going back doing a do over. You're not doing that at all. You're looking to sort out at this portion, at this juncture in the process, the issues that are potentially significant that are new. Those have to be identified for the applicant. And if that happens, then the issues that you identify will essentially be the scope for the supplemental environmental impact statement, which does not necessarily, as you know, for environmental impact statements, don't have to address everything as a rule. They are, you know, they can be either broad or narrow, depending on what the scope is. At the supplemental environmental impact stage, scoping is optional. And you're probably, you're going to be determining if there does happen to be a positive declaration, you're going to be determining what the scope is as part of your process of figuring out what you think, you know, what new or changed issues may present adverse environmental impacts. And that that basket of issues that you've identified will end up being the scope for the supplemental EIS. I hope that makes some sense.
George, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? I know that you and John have been in communication today.
Yes, I would like to thank you, first of all, for putting us on the agenda tonight. This is a very large application. I know it has a lot of material in it. We put it online. Hopefully, it makes it easier to handle. But hard copies are also going to be available. And all I can say is we've tried to make it easier to understand with several documents. One is the project narrative that you'll find in the front of the document. There's there are, of course, are four applications, site plan, special permit, and the subdivision, the minor subdivision, and the wetlands permit. And they're all fairly standard applications. But the big issue here, two issues for us, one is completeness and one is the secret determination. And I think they can go on separate tracks. I agree with everything John said. I only would add that although he gave you a lot of information about supplemental EIS, in our opinion, we don't think a supplemental is justified, but that's the board's decision. We think it's equally appropriate to go in the direction of a negative declaration with respect to the changes and their environmental significance. So to help with that process, we have just sent over, too soon for you to really look at that, a chart which shows how the project was configured back in 2013 and 14, when the FGEIS and findings statement were adopted, and how it's configured today. And I think you'll agree when you look at it that they are strikingly identical. The major changes here are locational and design of buildings. Some significant locational changes, but I mean, as far as what is the composite functions of the country into is essentially the same project. So we give you that document, you have the project narrative. We also gave you a chart showing the new studies that we've done, which supplement the FEAF. And these studies can be added to what was already looked at in the FGEIS. Those studies address the changes essentially, or any change such as archaeology that has changed over time. So the combination of those three documents, the project narrative, the chart comparing the project as it was in 2013, the project as it is now, and the updates of the studies, I think are all very first, good first steps in terms of getting a grip on what has been changed and what the potential impacts may be. The second issue, other than seeker, that we want to really talk about tonight and be clear on for us as well as for you is completeness. And in my sense, my opinion, the completeness issue is one of whether we've given you in terms of an application enough to determine it complete for review, and then to circulate an update to involve the interested agencies. And that's traditionally done where you have a G EIS, you have a number of agencies out there, particularly involved agencies who want to see the changes. And you're obligated, in fact, to circulate, but it's an update. It's not looking for lead agency. It's an update of the materials and the applications that have already been circulated, in this case, in 2013, 2014. We can skip past the phase one approval that that is still pending. I mean, it's not pending, but it's still effective. We have an approved phase one site plan. And we also have the same special use permit that was approved back in 2014 as the continuing, or 2015, as the continued special use permit. We're applying to renew that so we get a new start point on it. And we're also applying for the new site plan as amended site plan for what we do have in place now for phase one. The wetlands permit is a is a permit that expired. And so we need to apply for that as a new permit, and there are changes in that as well. And finally, the minor subdivision is to create finally the 250 acre lot, which will form the basis of this property and this proposal. So in terms of completeness, we think we've given you all the information you need to review. You may want more information on seeker issues. But I think as far as completeness goes, all that means is that you can start review and you can circulate the updates to the involved agency, interested agencies. So we'd like to see that happen, and we were hoping it would happen tonight. If it can happen tonight, just because there hasn't been enough time to look at all this material, we would ask to have it added to the agenda on June fifteen. So we don't lose too much time in getting this information out to the agencies, which will all need time to review the material that they're concerned with, whether it's the village or the DOT, or the state health department, DUC, whatever, whether the agencies are, they will all need time. So the longer we delay in getting that material out, the later this whole process will go. So we're hoping to get completeness determined as soon as possible. I would just mention that we do have an ongoing process, because I know it came up in discussions with Michael and John, that we have this historic landscape presentation that we prepared for Charles Bernbaum's, so his review could proceed with some understanding of what the principles were behind the design that we have today. And Mr. Bernbaum has gotten comments back to us. We've been allowed now to have Reed Hildebrand, our consultants on landscape, be talking directly with Charles Bernbaum. And so at some point, they will eventually work out an agreed upon document that will describe the principles upon which this designer founded. We don't expect to, we don't believe that there's any reason that the planning board should hold up completeness and distribution of the updates that are involved, until Mr. Bernbaum and our consultants together work out a final description of the project. We have given you a very adequate, I think, eighty-nine, ninety-eight page presentation, which describes in great detail what the basis of the design is. So at this point, I don't really see any reason not to do completeness determination. I look forward to getting your questions about seeker and filling those little holes in the application if there are any. But I think to everybody's interest, we want to get this circulation done so that both the board and all the other involved agencies can start their reviews.
Okay, I mean, I certainly understand where you're coming from. Part of our discussion this morning was that there were some areas that we feel we really don't have all the information we need to circulate and get relevant comments back from those agencies. Therefore, that's why we're going to work very hard and very, as quickly as we can, to put together a definitive list of what further information required. It's not just for secrets, also for the overall review for the project itself. And also so that we feel we can confidently circulate it and hopefully ensure that the commentary that we do get back from the other involved and interested agencies really are the information that we require from them, that we don't have them coming back to us asking for more information and basically drawing the process out that way. We're hoping to just do it once and cover all the bases with that. So that's basically where we are right now. And I think we're gonna, the other problem, of course, we have is, I'm sure you can understand, is we have lost about two and a half months of review of projects that were already, so many of them already on their way to being approved, you know, other applicants, things like that. Which is why our June fifteenth agenda has already been filled up, which is why we're putting another meeting on for July sixth, an additional meeting, which is where we plan to have grassmire again, and a couple of other things that are somewhat come back before us. But we want to give them a chance and time to, you know, come and speak to us. But we also have to be cognizant of all the other applications that we were working on, a number of them which were coming close to approval, but everything just stopped dead, which is tonight, we, of course, we did a number of rescheduling the public hearings, and we'll do more on the fifteenth. So it's my understanding is, and John, Kimberly, Jim, correct me, I believe we have grassmire scheduled for July sixth. Is that true? I'm not hearing much.
I think, John, you're muted.
All right, that was my understanding based on the discussion that we had
Okay.
this morning.
Everything is going to be a little more difficult now because, well, we've lost about two and a half, almost three months. And we do, we're going to do our best to catch up. We are going to schedule extra meetings, and we're going to try to move things along as quickly as we can. But the protocol now under which we're working also makes things a little more difficult. It is easier when you're sitting down face to face, and it is easier than to have all things together, maps and all that sort of stuff. But I think we're going to do the very best that we can with this. And we certainly desire to hold this up.
Yep, I, Michael, I tried to emphasize that in my conversation with George this afternoon, that the board really is committed to, you know, understands the need to keep not only this application, but all the other applications that are on the board for the for review, to try to keep them moving to, you know, we're trying to, we were working in our meeting today to try to figure out the most efficient timeline going forward so that, you know, for both the applicant and for the board, to keep this moving through the process as quickly as we can, while at the same time fulfilling, you know, the board has its duties to fulfill as lead agency and as the planning board, and also to make sure that the board understand, you know, has a good working understanding of the new plan as we move forward, so.
So if I could just make one request, Michael, if you're going to get us the list, the sooner the better, so that we would have an opportunity perhaps to get those materials back to you within the deadline for the June sixth meeting, which may be a July sixth meeting, which may be something like June. which may be, a July 6 meeting, which may be something like June 22nd. I don't know what it is.
It's June 22nd.
Okay, good guess.
That's, that is our intent, George, is to get that to them plenty of times so you can make that deadline. That is our intent.
Great, okay.
Members of the planning board, do you have any questions or anything that you'd like to raise at this point? Are you all muted now?
Jim, can you bring everybody up so that at least we can see everyone?
Everyone, what do you mean?
Well, I only have, but maybe I should try to switch my view. There you go.
I guess I would ask now, the representatives of the village, did they have any questions about what the planning board is trying to do or any questions they wish to ask Jonathan or George?
No, I don't, Brandt Uniker, no, not right now, thanks.
Okay, we, we're very much, or do you guys? If you guys have questions, issues that you need information on, please share it with us, because that can go on our list as well, that we're preparing for the applicant.
We'll be in touch with you about that, but thank you very much for the offer.
You're most welcome. Good to have you here.
Yeah, I think it would be very helpful for the planning board's process going forward to, if the village does have concerns or areas that they have a particular interest in, I think that if those could be communicated to the planning board and possibly be folded into the, whatever, the consideration of the document that we'll be giving to the applicant that sets forth the additional information that's required. I think if we had something from the village so that we can at least get a rudimentary understanding of the issues that are important to the village and the things that you think you're going to be watching as this goes forward. And that will allow us to build into the process, if there's a need for us to be asking for information, that's going to allow us to act on that earlier rather than later, so that we can, you know, not, not have to stretch things out later on. And it'll also help the planning board members in their thinking about this to just understand where the village is coming from. So if you guys were able to just put together a letter, even if it's just short, and sets forth some bullet points about the things that are, at least based on what the, what you know and understand about the project right now, what the village's concerns are, that would be really helpful to us as lead agency going forward.
Thank you, that, that makes a lot of sense. And the only caveat that I have is that it'll take a little time, but I'll rush to try and digest the documentation that you provided. I think it's, you know, quite comprehensive and detailed, and we really would like to have at least a day or two to review it and then get down to coming up with some thoughts and putting them on paper.
Yep, and Brandt, this won't be your last bite at the apple. You know, this is, they'll still, you know, there will be concerns and things that need to be looked at that evolve as the process goes forward. But this will at least introduce us to the things that the village cares about, so we can start thinking about those things and working those things into the process from the get-go.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the planning board, any comment or questions that any of you might have?
I have a question.
Yes.
There's mention of a membership club. Are we to assume that that is not part of what we're now looking at and reviewing?
I believe that a membership club is one of the accessory uses permitted for a country and two. So yes, it is one of the things we would be looking at, along with the other accessory uses that are permitted for a country and two. So yes, it is one of the things we will be looking at.
It would be useful to have some information about it.
Yes, that's one of the things we will be asking for, is exactly what's entailed, density of use, things of that sort. There are a number of questions that come up with that, that fall within our purview as it is an accessory use allowed under our zoning law for a country and two.
Okay.
I like your wall hanging.
Thank you.
Can I also just say upfront that I, I think one of the things I'm interested in knowing more about that I didn't see in the package, and if it's there and I missed it, I apologize. And that's how vehicles will be accessing the property during construction and what the actual needs of the construction phase of the project are. Our trucks coming in, how our construction materials being delivered. I think we'd want to take a look at that to know the impact overall on the construction period. So if it's in the documentation, fine. If not, it's one of the things I'd like to see more information on.
Yeah, yeah, that's certainly something that we can provide, that's easy. I mean, some of the other issues are really going to be business model decisions that we make over the next two years. And I don't know what some of the projections look like. Some of it, there's almost no way to tell. So, but certainly, construction vehicles is easy to quantify.
Well, and the, and the access, you know, when I look at the plan, there's three, three ways in, and I'm trying to envision how that, how those three routes are used or not used in construction, and if they aren't being used, then how are you getting there? So a little more detail on that would be very useful.
Yeah, 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 definitely, that's, that's what I said. That's, that's certainly something that we can pull together.
Are you also, I see we received a letter about questions about that driveway past the stone house. Are you working on an easement there, or is that going to be part of the package at some point?
Yeah, there, apparently, there is a, you know, we've been working with them for a couple of years. We made the, the people that own that little house aware of the situation and told them that it was our, what we wanted to do was just make sure that they were taken care of on the front end, in the sense of, if there were any issues that needed to get clarified, let us, you know, let us, let us do that now. They had their attorney look at it, and they said that there is an easement in the deed that allows them access to use of that, of that, of that driveway. They seemed comfortable with it. We just spoke about it, actually, a couple of days ago, and I just said, just make sure you're comfortable. If you're comfortable, we're comfortable. And, but they're, they're certainly aware of it, and they've had their attorney take a look at it.
So, so it'll be easy for us to get a copy of that?
I, I believe so. They, they indicated that they had it.
Very good. Well, anyone else have a comment, a question, or ready for dinner, or whatever? Well, I think we're in pretty good shape then. We know what our job is now in terms of getting that list together of concerns, of questions and issues. And we will be doing it as quickly as we possibly can to get that to you. And then you will do what you can to get us the information that we're requesting. And that's going to hopefully leave us in a position to determine both completeness and make a determination of significance as to whether any further seeker review is required for the newer elements of the project. So once we reach that level, I think things will hopefully sort of follow a normal path and should happen quite smoothly, I would think, certainly hope so.
So do we.
Yeah, I bet you do. Anything else that anyone else would like to share? Okay, we have one more planning board issue, another thing we need to deal with. I thank you all for joining us on this. We are definitely going to be in touch, and hopefully, we're going to find a satisfactory solution to the issues that we have before us and also as quickly as possible, so we can move this thing along.
Good, good, we appreciate that.
We all take care, and let's hope it turns into spring again.
Yes, summer, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess the last question I have is for planning board members. Would you like to deal with the stamped property rezoning now? Or would you like to put it off to the, to our next meeting? Give you a chance to read it and consider and?
I'd prefer to put it off, if that's okay.
I would, too.
That's what I.
Okay, so the, it was a couple of weeks, plenty of time to consider. We put it on the 15th?
I think so.
Yeah, time may.
Okay, we'll agenda that for the 15th then. We're in a bit of a quandary right now, because we don't have a designated motioner for adjournment, so.
Michael, before you do that, I would just, in order to expedite moving forward, grassmire, I would encourage all the members of the planning board to really begin to send to you areas of interest where they feel there's not enough information or they want more information. You know, we've committed to giving them a list in as timely a fashion as we can. I know I have a shortlist, some of you, I assume, also have your own shortlist. But if, I think sending them to Jim and Michael, the sooner we can get that together, the sooner we can move it along. And we want to hear from everybody in terms of what their areas of concern are.
And as we develop the list, we will circulate it back to all of you, so you can all see what's on the list and how things are generating. So you'll all be up to speed on that. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I submit.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all very much. This went a lot more smoothly than I was afraid it was going to go.
Michael, can I, Michael, can I just say one thing for the future? If you guys are doing business, a roll call vote on things you're voting for will make it clearer with the, just in this format, anyway.
Okay, very good. Well, with that statement, everyone take care and stay safe, and hope to see you all in person sooner than later.
Thank you.